Okay.
Thank you. So back to the color plan?
Yeah, I think that's probably the easiest to read. I'll be happy to answer any questions from the zoning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Mr. Henson, any questions of Mr. Jury and staff?
I just have one quick question, Paul. And this relates to the parking aisles again. And I did read in the article, or I mean, I'm sorry, in the staff report, about Krispy Kreme having a 20-foot drive aisle. And obviously, that's a different, a smaller site. But it is one that gets in and out traffic, you know, regular people getting in and out of cars and parking and coming and going frequently. I also know you don't get reports from the sheriff's office on a regular basis. But has this location been any kind of example of increased incidence to your knowledge or even anecdotally?
I'm not aware that it has. They do more of a drive-through business than they do of going into the, you know, store. But no, I'm not, I'm not aware that it has had an increase of accidents.
Okay, and those are 20-foot aisles, right? I think that's what the report said. I just.
Yeah, double check. Yes.
That's the only question I had right now for you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Eliff, any questions of Mr. Jury and staff?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for Paul and/or Sarah, whoever wants to take it. On the drive aisle width, I mean, nobody wants a 22-foot drive aisle or 20-foot drive aisle. But I see we're still recommending against that, which I respect. But if, if that is turned down, does that kill the deal? I mean, they must think they need this amount of parking and they've looked at it a couple of times. What's the implications of that?
I think that's a question for the applicant.
Okay. You guys didn't discuss that beforehand or the importance of that or anything?
I, I think, and it was also discussed during the last month's meeting, that they do feel that is their optimum parking number is what is they're proposing, mainly because there is not really the opportunity for off-site parking such as on the street. You know, when you're in more of an urban area, there, you may have the option of parking on the streets somewhere. With this particular location, there is, there's not that option. So they do feel that they need that many spaces for this particular use. And this is also, I believe, based off of their past history with some of their other developments.
Okay. And you guys at the staff didn't see an alternative configuration that would work? Did you? I mean, I know that's not usually your role to do that, but you're not aware of an alternative?
We, we did not lay one out, no.
Okay. If this is denied, I know the trustees ultimately make the decision. Then what, what happens? Does it go back to the old plan with the kind of 1970s-style walk-up apartments? It's already on the books? Or what happens?
Well, I mean, parking, the, the parking request is only a variance, and you're right.
No, I'm not talking about the park. I'm talking about if, if this amended request is denied, what, what is the result? Does it go back to the old plan that had nine apartment units and there were walk-ups? And what, what happens?
Yes, that would be the last plan that would have been approved. Since it will have been over a year, it would need to come back to the zoning commission for a final development plan review. And that would be, I mean, it would come before you for a final development plan review regardless. But since it's been over a year, it would be advertised as a public hearing.
Okay.
Versus your standard, you know, final development plan review.
Okay. On the sign, the sign, I apologize if we talked about this last time, but I couldn't recall. The sign is not compliant today, correct?
Correct. It was issued a variance shortly after the shopping center was constructed. And at that, it was through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. That variance doesn't just carry over? Doesn't, doesn't the variance run with the land?
Our interpretation was since this was a rezoning, it was reconsidered during the rezoning request.
Okay. There, it was discussion in the staff report, and I think the applicant mentioned too, that there was detail now shown on the pedestrian connection to the trailhead. And I apologize because I meant to call you and ask you this. But I'll have to ask you now. I did not see detail on that. Where is that? I mean, it's probably on one of the sheets. I just wasn't seeing it correctly. But I know it's supposed to cross the street and go down the road and connect up to the new bridge. But I don't, was unable to locate that detail.
Oh, I think the detail we were trying to explain, kind of where Sarah's pointing the mouse, is that it's, that's the trailhead that we were, we were referencing. And then there is a sidewalk that goes out to the, the light at Beauchamp and Elston. And that's where the connection would be.
I got you.
Yes.
I think I saw that there. Okay, that's, that's all my questions. Thanks a lot.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Eliff. Ms. McBride?
Thank you. Just one question, Paul, and it's relating to the sign. So the sign that right now is approved for the site is the one that does conform with the zoning regulations. It's the 15 feet tall and just under 100 square feet. And I just want to be clear then, that sign was also for residential development with adjoining mixed-use retail, right?
Right. The sign that is, is in the plan sheet was approved for the final development plan for the commercial properties. And that's what was presented at that time. It was one sign for the entire development.
Okay, fine. I just wanted to make sure that, that I understood that correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, any questions of Mr. Jury and staff?
Yeah, I guess one question and one comment. Paul, can you talk a bit more about the scope of the traffic impact study? Saying it's been developed, what's that, what's that mean and what's that look like?
So the applicant has been in discussion with ODOT regarding what they need for this change of use and their scope. Essentially, and I'll let Mr. Rosenberg discusses, is they're looking at the two entrance and exit points to the development. So that's there at the signal and that is the shared entrance exit with the adjacent shopping center. They're looking at those two to see if any improvements need to be made on 125 Beauchamp Avenue or on, on this, on the site itself, on the private portion of the site. So those are the two areas that they will be looking at. They'll be, and it does not extend. Last meeting, there was some discussion if the study would include 32 or if it would include Signal Hill Lane, and ODOT is not requiring that.
Okay, yeah, I get, I get that. Okay, I probably have some questions for the applicant about that. And on the sign, it, it seems to me that when we approved it before for the, the commercial development, we used the rezoning as a, as a vehicle to get non-conformant signs into, into compliance. So I don't see why, if we, we did that before, why we wouldn't try and do that again. That was a comment, not a question, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I have no questions of Mr. Jury and staff. So with that, if the applicant would like to present the revisions to their plan, please state your name and address and any affiliation to the case as far as company name, et cetera.
Sure. My name is Andrew Walker and the address is 1433 Grandview Avenue, Columbus, Ohio. 3212. And I am the senior project manager for the developer for the project with Metropolitan Holdings. Paul, before I present, I have one question for you. You, I, I just want to make sure that we, we don't miss something on a technicality. You mentioned that we no longer need a landscape variance because we meet the 10%. Do we still need a variance, which, which I thought that we did because we're planting some of the trees in alternate locations? I think it was suggested that we could do that. I just want to make sure that that doesn't need to be on the list of variances.
So 10% is not included in the interior parking area?
No, we have 10% landscaping. But as far as the number of trees required, we, I believe we have a number of them planted around the perimeter, which are technically not interior parking lot trees. And it was said that that would be acceptable, but I believe that still would be a, a variance.
Yes, I would agree. Yes, it would need to be a variance. So thank you for.
Okay. I want to make sure that when, when it's written that, we don't have to come back for, for that variance.
No, thank you.
Um, I'm going to share. All right, can, can you see my screen? It's got the colored site plan up.
Yes, sir.
Paul did a good job of presenting the project and then we presented it last month. So I'm going to go through just some of the items that were, were talked about. First up, I've got our, our site section and I'll talk about the, the AC units. In regards to the sound, part of our resubmission packet was a letter from our mechanical engineer who looked at the calculations that I had done last time. And he reran calculations and his numbers are that the decibel level is actually much lower than, than what I had presented before. I guess a significant amount of the sound from one AC unit to another will cancel each other out. A lot also gets absorbed by the hillside from the trees and the sound goes in all directions. So by the time it gets to the houses, it, it's about, it's, it was quieter than a typical bedroom at night. So pretty quiet. As far as the views of the AC units, when we started looking at this, to block, to block views from above, we'd be required to build 15-foot-plus walls around the banks of AC units, which is essentially adding a full story to the building to add all these walls. And if I look at the site plan here, there'd have to be these, these 10, 15-foot-plus walls around every group of AC units. And that essentially gets rid of kind of the articulation we're trying to give to the building with some of the pop-ups. It would make the entire thing almost five stories. It, it causes major structural issues, but putting a wall up on top of the building that's that tall, that's going to, got to take wind load. And it just doesn't seem, seem practical to try to screen these from above. I'll go to, as far as the, the parking, Paul did say, we, we relooked at this. We were able to increase some of the interior lots from 20 to 22 feet. What you can, what you see here in blue, everything in blue complies with zoning. The drive aisles in orange are the ones that are undersized. Paul did mention that we went to a one-way aisle down here at the, at the southern edge. Zoning only requires that to be 13 feet. We could spread that, that additional two feet across the three drive aisles to the north. However, we felt that because this is along the perimeter, a decent amount of trucks or moving vans and stuff may choose to go down this one-way aisle. And we thought it seemed appropriate to, instead of adding around six inches to the other ones, that it might be more appropriate to make that drive aisle a little bit wider. I showed a video last month of a, a vehicle successfully navigating in a 18-foot-deep space with a 20-foot drive aisle. So we feel that 22 feet, especially when it's not in a primary circulation path of the parking lot, is more than adequate. And I can come back to this if anyone has, has further questions. Lastly, as it relates to the sign, a, a lot of talk, a lot of discussion was around people entering and leaving the site. And I think it's desirable that we try to encourage people to use the signalized intersection that's at the east. And we believe having a, having a sign that helps identify that would be appropriate. The sign has been here. In this configuration, it's set quite far back from Beauchamp. And you can see in this upper right image, if you're, the, the person who took this didn't want to go out into Beauchamp to take it. But if you were driving down the street, I mean, there's a lot of trees and other vegetation in the way. And so we feel having, having that sign seems, seems appropriate in allowing that to exist. The red dashed line shows approximately, what the altered sign is, is cutting off the top of the sign and lowering the, where the tenant names go down a little bit. And the red line shows approximately where the, the sign on the left would be if we were to reconfigure the sign. And other than that, I think that I'll take any questions that anyone has.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lewis, any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, did you, did you say Mr. Lewis or Mr. Eliff? I'm sorry, my thing blipped out.
Mr. Lewis.
Pardon, Jay. Go ahead.
Okay, no problem. Can you talk to, about the, the scope of the traffic impact study? What discussions you have had about the parameters, when it's going to start, when it's going to end, some of the key metrics?
Sure. Mark, if you're on.
Yeah, I also have Jenny Engel that's been in the correspondence with Dustin Williams with ODOT. We provided all the correspondence via emails in that correspondence. Jenny, if you want to kind of just briefly talk, go quick about the two.
Rosenberg, you could state your name and address for the record. Sorry about that. Thank you.
My name is Mark Rosenberg. I'm located at 7976 Rio Grande Drive, Cleveland, Ohio, 45042.
Engel is with Fairbacker, 6900 Tyler's Hill Road, Basin, Ohio, 45040. And we have been talking with Dustin at ODOT, as mentioned. We will study these two intersections. And timeline-wise, this will have to do with the project, but we can always go back and change those analysis years. And ODOT has come back. We will be doing a safety review along with this traffic impact study. We just have not added that to the script, but we addressed those comments.
For this, for this project, we've kind of cut it in and out. This project, in the discussions with ODOT, we're only required to study the Beauchamp location at Elston and then the shared access drive with the, with the commercial development to the west. That is what we're focusing on doing with ODOT and as discussed and approved with ODOT in terms of scope. We can certainly add any other questions pertaining to traffic if you'd like, as best we can, sir.
Mr. Lewis?
The, the audio is sort of breaking up. Don't know if it's my connection or the, the applicant's.
Mr. Lewis, as part of our original submission as well, we've got the, hold on, I'm trying to pull some, pull up a PDF, but the, the WebEx interfaces is interfering. As part of our original submission, we did submit some estimated traffic volumes for the site. The table at the top is, is if a rezoning did not happen just with the shopping center. If the shopping center was in full utilization, would not require a rezoning. And the two numbers highlighted below are the AM and PM peak hour new trips. The table below is the same, same analysis with the proposed land use. And it was found that we're estimating significantly fewer, fewer trips with the rezoned use.
Okay. I, I don't have a chance to go through the data, but that's what I was looking for. Stuff detailed as, as what it is, what it, the projections would be. So. Paul, have you, has that forwarded to you?
I was looking for that particular document.
It was part of our, it was part of our application package that was submitted for the county back in November and then it used as our submittal for, for the December meeting.
Okay.
And Mr. Lewis, this, this is not the traffic study. This was just an analysis as, as part of our application.
Understood. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. McBride, questions of the applicant?
Yes, thank you. I've, I've just got a few. Area that's going to be used for loading and unloading, you know, moving furniture or somebody's getting a new refrigerator or whatever the deal is, is that back at the, on the north side? On the, the northern part of the building on the west side? Is that at that area?
It's probably going to happen at several locations around the building, depending on where the person lives.
Okay. And where, where is the front door to the building? Is that, is this that little concrete area there on the south elevation that looks like of the main rectangle?
Yeah. Can you see my cursor? It, it's the area right where you were describing. Yes, right here.
And but there, I'm assuming there'll be other secured doors for folks to get in and so forth, so they're not walking all around.
Correct. There's probably, I, I don't, I'd have to count on the floor plane, but there's probably around six different stairwells and exits.
So I'm going to the, to the traffic for just a minute. So the reduction that, that you were just describing in the AM and PM peak hours, was that based on the current approved plan for the site?
That was based, the original one was based on the, the zoning prior to that, the retail use.
Okay. So what's the, what's the difference in the AM and PM peak hours between the approved plan and the proposed plan?
I don't, Mark, I, did you do that analysis?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing, hearing him.
Yeah, he was asking if you could repeat the question. So the question, Mr. Rose, was, did you do an analysis between the approved plan, the approved multifamily plan in, from 2018 to the proposed plan now?
Jenny, don't, I have been updated.
I have looked into it. I do not have that exact number right now. But we are adding additional units to that number, but it did not affect the trips by much. It was very few trips with the numbers ran with internal capture and everything.
Yeah, when I'm looking at this number, a significant number of the trips are driven by the retail outlots. Only 120 and 152 of these totals down here are driven by the, the multifamily, if I'm reading this correctly. Or, no, I may not be reading this correctly.
Well, I'm sure that ODOT will probably be asking those questions and they're the ones to do that. I do have one other question, though, related to traffic. And that is, if ODOT requires changes be made to modify or somehow realign or whatever they may ask for on that western access on Beauchamp that's off your property, how, how will that be done? Because I, I know the property owner, I believe Paul, submitted a letter indicating that they did not want any modifications made to that access point.
Ms. McBride, is that a question for me or for Paul?
I'm saying it's for you.
I've spoken, so Mr. Hettelson did submit a letter that he has opposed. I spoke to ODOT about that and what their ability is to require any modifications. They said that it's, it's very limited unless the intersection is dangerous. And as Jenny mentioned, part of our, the scope of our traffic study is to study the safety of that intersection and historic crash reports. And so if, if that number is high, ODOT would be able to still require changes. If that number is low, then ODOT would not, unless the situation changed in the future.
Okay. And I, there's one last question for you and then I'll let it go on to another commission member. The renderings that we got show a building sign on the, on the building itself, skytop. And I just wondered, I, I think that sign just roughly is going to be about, what, 40 feet in the air?
Yeah, at least, yeah.
Forty, 50 feet, yeah, because it's on top, one, two, three, four, so 40 to 50 feet in the air. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that there is a building sign in addition to the signage that you're asking for. So those are all my questions.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mr. Eliff, questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have just a couple. Thank you. On the sign, I just looked at that drawing that Paul reiterated with us. Yeah, there it is. And it looks like you're reducing the height of it a lot. How, how much of, to, so to keep that sign as you want it, how much of a variance do you need? I wasn't clear on that because the staff is recommending no on that. But I don't know the details of what, what precisely variance you need. I would, in my opinion, if you need one at all, but it's not my issue to decide.
I'm not sure what the height of the existing sign is. We're, we're proposing to just keep it, keep it as is.
Well, it doesn't show as is. I mean, it's showing a red line across it. And then the elevation on the left is showing a, a sign with no peak on it or anything. Am I not reading that correctly?
The, the elevation on the left is what was presented and approved at the final development, in the final development plan that's already approved. That is a, that's the sign that complies. The sign on the right is the existing sign with the red line showing the approximate top of, of this sign over here on the left.
Right. Well, in your, that you submitted, you guys said you're going to refresh the sign. What, what was, you, what were you meaning by that then?
This, this green triangle up on top, we'd like to, it looks like it's faded and perhaps could use some maintenance. So we would, if we were allowed to keep the height of the sign, we would propose fixing that up. And then also any other kind of deferred maintenance on the sign, any painting or anything like that that needs to be done.
So you're really not, I mean, if you go with the sign that. So you're really not, I mean, if you go with the sign that, that was approved, you're really not losing any sign face area, are you?
We're losing well, we're losing, this, this black bar at the top is a blacked out sign. So we're losing that. The, the lower portion of the existing sign is, it looks like it's about the same size as the proposed sign, but then there's the additional sign up at the top. And in addition to the height, allowing it to be seen from a little bit farther away.
Don't you think the one that was approved is better looking? I do. Do you?
Well, that's why we're proposing to, to get rid of this triangle. The, the one that's proposed is actually the same, they're using the same structure. These, these columns at the bottom are the same columns. They're just cutting the top off and lowering, lowering the signage panels down a few feet.
I'm sorry, you're saying that's on the approved sign or that's what you would want to do?
No, the, the approved sign is essentially the same. Yeah, the approved sign is essentially the same sign with the top cut off of it.
I got you. Okay.
And then lower down a little bit. Like all those, this word yoga would lower down to about the red line and everything else below it would, would also go down.
Thanks for explaining that to me.
Mr. Olive, so the existing sign is, is 30 feet, three inches.
And I missed the first part. You said the existing sign is 30 feet, three inches?
Correct. Yeah, the existing sign is 30 feet, three inches.
And, and I can't read the approved one. How tall is, uh?
It's just shy 15 feet. It was like 14, it was just, it was 14 nine, I believe.
It looks like it's 15 feet, Paul, on this dimension.
Yeah, you're right. 15 feet total. Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we'd still have it shared with all the tenants, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then on, on the parking, I think I know the answer to this, but I'll ask you since Paul told me to ask you this question. Everybody, everybody wants 24 foot aisles, but it's like you did repencil it like, like I was hoping you would and you came up with a little bit wider, but you just couldn't get that, that 24. Is it just an impossibility to do that and provide all the spaces or?
Yeah, I mean.
Efforts on that?
Yeah, assuming, unless we completely eliminated this median and the trees in there, it's just impossible and we, we, we looked at it every which way and we essentially lose all of these spaces in the southern aisle to get an extra two feet in each of those other aisles.
And was the reason for wanting the additional spaces, Paul and Sarah did the count analysis and it's overparked, but is that because you are agreeing to accommodate the public trailhead traffic there?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons. So one of the reasons is we know some spaces will likely get used for the trailhead. As Paul mentioned in his, his presentation, there is, we don't have the opportunity for overflow, like parallel parking on the street. You can't just ask someone to park on, on Beachmont. And we believe that this is going to be a destination and people are going to want to have their friends over to come to the pool or to participate in a cooking class or any number of other events that we may have here. And so we just want to be sure that we have enough spaces to accommodate all of that.
Okay, okay. That's a lot, Mr. Gothard. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olive. Mr. Henson, any questions of the applicant?
Yeah. I think I was a little bit surprised by the, the letter from the neighboring property owner. Maybe I should not have been. But considering that and do you feel like those negotiations currently are final? Or do you think, you know, that they'll be ongoing between the two of you? Or do you think you've come to a, a stopping point there?
Which neighbor are you referring to, Mr. Henson?
The western access, the shared entryway.
He's, he's pretty opposed to, to any changes.
Okay. Just considering that and looking at this traffic pattern, are you perhaps more concerned with potential bottlenecking? I'm looking at the southeastern three-way, the internal intersection where the red arrow is, and then also the, the, I don't know how to describe it, the sort of the southwestern corner where the one-way angled parking begins. Both of those locations kind of look like there's potential for some bottlenecking, particularly at AM and peak. AM and PM peak. Have you given additional thought to this now, considering that neighbor's reluctance to make changes to, to his driveway?
You're talking about here and over here?
So yes, to the second one you pointed to, but then I'm talking about the one in the southeast corner. If I said west, I did not mean to, the, the main primary entrance.
This one over here?
Yeah.
So this one here and then also the internal intersection right here?
Right. It just seems with, with, with your outflow being reduced, that the, the load on both of those points is going to be a little more heavy.
I mean, this is not a high turnover parking lot like a, a Target or a Walmart or grocery store. I don't think that we really anticipate any real bottlenecking at either of those areas.
Right. And I think morning, you know, and evening rush hour type of coming in and trying to make a left-hand turn there if someone else is trying to do their thing from one of the parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera. I just didn't know that.
I see what you're saying.
Your considerations.
I mean, I don't think that they're any different. I guess if, this is a good example over here in the, on the upper left, that a typical retail shopping center would have spaces that back out into a drive aisle with other drive aisles and then going perpendicular into them. And that seems to work all over the place. So I don't know if, I don't know if those others areas are really that much different.
Okay. Again, I'm more particularly just thinking about morning and evening with this being, you know, these are going to be professionals. They're going to be, you know, commuting to work. There, there are going to be two times of the day where there's a particular strain on the ingress and egress.
Right.
But those are my questions. Thank you.
And, yeah, and we can certainly, certainly look at that and see if there's anything we can do as we develop our site plan.
I have a couple of questions for you. On the elevation sheets, it now looks like the bulk storage and compact area may be a, a roof structure?
No, the, the compactor and the bulk storage are both still in the stick area on the site plan as they were previously.
Right. And I believe there was discussion that would not have a roof structure over top of it?
Oh, a, a roof structure over them.
Right.
No, I don't, I don't believe you can put a roof structure over the compactor unless you made it really tall due to how it's accessed. The bulk storage is just, is a fence kind of around to give a place so that there aren't just, when people have to throw away their furniture, it's not just strewn about. It's, it's to contain it all in an area. And it's located currently on the other side of the trash compactor. So it should be shielded from views above by the trash compactor enclosure. Because that's probably a 15, 15-foot wall.
So the building's cross, or the site cross-section that was submitted, that's the garage for the cars that's shown in that cross-section?
Yes, that's the garage for the cars.
Okay. Okay. I have no additional questions. Thank you. So no other questions from the commission to the applicant?
Jonathan, I have one.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Lewis. Go ahead.
On the traffic study, hate to harp on it, but does that, the time it was done, did that include Big Ash Brewery or not?
The, the traffic study has not been started yet.
No, but the data that you showed with the current numbers and then the projections, did that, when did that when did it start? Did it include the Big Ash Brewery? Since it's only been a couple of years?
Jenny?
Yes, that included Big Ash Brewing as well as Starbucks in the reran numbers.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, could I ask staff one, one additional question?
Yes, please.
Paul, I just wondered, did you have any questions or Sarah or concerns about the 12 parking spaces that are southernmost on the main access drive there across from building C? It seems to me like those are going to back out into really a main drive aisle kind of situation. And I just didn't know if, if you had any concerns about people backing out of those.
To answer your question short, no. Those were presented, I believe during the it's a main, it is a main drive aisle, like you said, but it is an interior drive aisle. And we feel that those spots would be the least used depending on what ends up in building C, but it would be overflow parking most likely or employee parking by the, the workers who work in building C.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. So no other questions from the commission? With that, we will go ahead and open it to a quick comment. As Mr. Drew said before, any testimony that was heard during the last meeting in December of 2020 is still on record and still part of the decision made by this commission. So really no need to repeat those items that were brought up. But any sort of comment for the new information that was submitted for this meeting, please feel free to speak. Please state your name and address and if you have any affiliation to the case, i.e. neighbor, Jason Purcell owner, et cetera.
My name is Bob Hettleson. I, my address is 3905 Beach Street, Cincinnati 45227. And I am the owner of the shopping center to the west of Skytop. And I'd like to say that I approve of this project. This center has never been fully filled or even mainly partially filled since it's been built 20 years ago. I mean, it's, it's, my prospective tenants of which I now have lost about four tenants and, and prospective tenants say, their first comment is, this looks like a blighted area because we know that center has never been rented fully in 20 years. And as respect to the parking, I mean, we know how much you need parking and they obviously think that they need the 227 parking spots because you know how important parking is. It's, I get, I have a couple of tenants from Mount Lookout Square because of parking and their business, they were concerned about traveling over the levee. And now their business has actually doubled because they have parking as opposed to Mount Lookout Square. So parking is most important. As you can tell from downtown Cincinnati too, is dying because of the lack of parking. So I just truly support this and, and it'll certainly help from this being a blighted area, which it has a reputation of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, I, I had a question for Mr. Hettleson, Mr. Gothard. When it's appropriate, I would like to ask him a question or two.
We need that now, Mr. Olive?
I can, okay. Mr. Hettleson, are you still there? I can only see, hi. It's Brian Elliff on the, on the commission. Hey, so yes, your center there, it's really important. It's got a lot of kind of cool businesses in there and has had off and on. But since the center that Anderson did, it, it used to be full, it used to be pretty full. Surprisingly or amazingly, when you look at it now, but it's always had access through your center. What's the arrangement on that?
It's just been a gentleman's agreement that when, when the El Rancho Rankin was there, you know, we were friends with the Colonel. A lot of people didn't like the Colonel, but he was great to us. We were great to him. And actually, since the shopping center was there, it was, you know, when Remke was there, had no problem. We have no problems now. And I think ODOT will find that I don't know, I've had the center since 1988, which is 32 years. And, and I know of no accidents at that place. I hope, knock on wood, I'm not jinxing myself. But the, the large to get in and get out has been very helpful. We have a turn lane there, a left turn lane to get into the center and, and it works perfect. And that's why I think it's, it's worked.
Yeah, that, that helps. I just was wondering what the arrangement was. I, I've driven through there a bunch of times. I, I agree with everything you said. Okay. Thanks a lot, Mr. Gothard.
Thank you, Mr. Elliff. Thank you, Mr. Hettleson.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak?
Yeah. My name is Tony Gilio. I am a property owner at 5073 Signal Hill Lane. My property is directly north. Couple of things that I wanted to add. When it comes to considering this project, is this project good? And is there something that's better? And is this the best we can do? I think when it comes to screening around the AC units, the applicant has identified that it's going to be difficult to build walls. Just because something is difficult doesn't mean that it shouldn't be done. It seems like we're fighting very hard for extra parking spaces and I'm not really sure why. And then the final comment that I will make is in regards to the sign. When you talk about the sign, in my opinion, it's easier to cut the vegetation down in front of the sign than to allow a sign that's out of compliance. Seems like a really, really simple fix to me, but again, I'm just a property owner. I'm not into commercial development and I don't know anything about these types of things, but you know, those are my comments. I'm not thrilled with the format here. There doesn't seem to be a lot of exchange going back and forth. We're allowed to make a statement. And then we're kind of cut off from the last time, but that being said, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, this is Jason County, 5045 Signal Hill Lane. Also just wanted to sort of briefly weigh in. My concern is on the, you know, I'd reiterate everything Mr. Gilio said, but my concern is also related to the traffic study and the scope. We have significant concerns in the neighborhood about the impact with all the extra traffic getting in and out of our subdivision at peak times, meaning morning rush and afternoon rush. And I am concerned that the traffic study is not going to include the intersection between Signal Hill Lane and Route 32. And looking at the submission, at least as far as I can tell, it looks like um, at, at least as far as I can tell, it looks like, uh, the applicant proposed not to include it. And then ODOT went along with it even before the meeting we had last time. Um, and so I do have concerns related to that. Um, and I, and I think based on the issues raised by Signal Hill at the last meeting, um, it would be appropriate for the traffic study scope to include our intersection. I don't know if it's going to be a problem or not. I'm certainly not a traffic expert, but it would be nice to know if there's going to be an impact there. Uh, and since we're doing a traffic study anyway, uh, I think that would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, I, I, I have a comment. Um, my, my, my name is Dan Scullen. I live at, uh, fifty eighty-two Signal Hill Lane and I, uh, um, I agree with the last person's, uh, comment. It's, it's all with the traffic study. It's, this is, I, I'm all for the development. I think it's great for the township. I think it's great for the tax base and everything else, but, um, the last time we've had these, the, the past couple of meetings we've had online, the traffic study was going to include the thirty-two corridor, the order, and, and that's not, that has not happened. Based off, and, and there seems to be no clarity to, to what that, that traffic study is. And, and what the parameters were. So, and that's a major issue. So I just, I, I, I think that needs to be addressed.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Well, can someone answer that? Can someone at least respond to that, please?
Uh, I mean, the commission has, has read the documents from ODOT and ODOT typically will, and Mr. Drew, please assist me if I state something incorrectly or not completely. ODOT usually defines what the traffic impact study is required.
Yeah, but someone's got to define, someone's got to define what the study involves. And it sounds like there, there, there's no clarity on what that study, what, what, what the parameters were of that study. So, and, and you, it was completely glossed over like in one small paragraph and, and paragraph five of whatever slide that was that I can't even find anymore on here. So what, how is that? I mean, it affects more people than you think. It affects more of a tax base. Like, but yes, you're going to get more tax, township's going to get more, a lot of tax money from, from, from this development, but there's a lot of people that live up in Signal Hill that, that, that contribute a lot of taxes to, to Anderson Township.
And, and I believe you're referring to the table that was shown during the applicant's.
There was, it was glossed over very quickly and.
That is not the final traffic study. That is. That is. One is not completed to date. Have to be completed before, you know, it goes to the next stage of the approval processes and there's multiple processes to the thing.
You're, you're only focused on one twenty-five and Beachmont. You're not focused on the thirty-two corridor at all.
And again, the, the commission may have the opportunity to add to include that in the traffic study, but generally ODOT puts the parameters of a traffic study onto the.
Just, just, just say you're not including it. I mean, tell me, tell, tell us what the truth is.
Sir, right now.
Is, is, is thirty-two, the thirty-two corridor involved in that traffic study or not? Yes or no?
Based on the information that we were provided as part of the submission, the items, the study area per ODOT will consist of the following key intersections. Beachmont Avenue, State Route one twenty-five and Elston Road.
Yep.
Beachmont Avenue, State Route one twenty-five and the existing shared access drive, which is the access.
I, I, I heard that. And that's, but so, but the, the, the past two meetings that I've been on this, that, the concerns have been brought up about how the access to the thirty-two corridor coming off of one twenty-five is going to be affected by the traffic and, and no one's addressing that. And it's completely being glossed over right now. And that's, that to me, that's, I, I want this to, I, I want this to happen. I want this development to happen majorly, but, but you've got to include the people that, that, that are on that corridor.
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Make a suggestion. I believe that the applicant's traffic engineer is on there and perhaps she could explain how it is that ODOT, um, compiles not only the area of the study, but what year the study will address and, and so forth. So, so maybe she could just, you know, give a, a few sentences on how ODOT comes up with, with the area and the, the.
I thought it was what the applicant applied for, for the study, not what, what they're studying. Someone's got to apply for a study and for them to study. Am I, am I wrong? No one's answering me.
Well, it's, it's kind of hard to describe. I think, Ms. McBride, I like your suggestion.
It's actually pretty simple.
Let me, let me add something because we, I work with traffic studies a lot. And maybe this will help answer his question. The way it works is the developer and the developer's consulting traffic engineer, who is on the call tonight with us, studies the issue. The consulting engineer makes a recommendation to ODOT. We already know ODOT's requiring a traffic study. Okay. A traffic study is being required. The consulting engineer makes a recommendation to ODOT District Eight. And District Eight reviews the recommendation. District Eight may agree with the recommendation or they may not. And I would also add that thirty-two is a state highway. And ODOT is very protective of and concerned about development impact on their state roads. One twenty-five being the main one here, obviously it's right in front of it. And then thirty-two, which you guys are impacted by, obviously a lot because it generates so much pass-through traffic. This development will, will probably have some impact on it. But the commissioners have no way of judging if it's substantial or not. That will be in the judgment of the consulting engineers, which may or may not be endorsed by ODOT. If ODOT disagrees with the consulting engineer's recommendation, then they will force them to expand the scope. That decision is with ODOT.
Right, Brian, I've always, throughout these meetings, we've always had here, I've always agreed with your stance and respected your opinion and, and I do. And, and I understand what you're saying. Um, but it's, it's, you cannot say that it's not going to impact the flow from literally two, three hundred yards away from, from this, from the traffic flow, when it's already, we've already got a major problem at, at certain times of the day here.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
This is Paul. Again, I, I would be happy to have a conversation with some Signal Hill residents and ODOT. Not just regarding this development, but also their ongoing study of traffic on thirty-two. It's been going on for years. It's called the Eastern Corridor Study. So I would be happy.
The Eastern Corridor Study is, it's done. It's, it's, it's not going to happen. You know, it's not going to happen.
The study is ongoing and there's still.
It's, it's, it's not going to happen. Did you know that?
Sir.
I would be happy to meet with you and discuss with ODOT.
Okay.
Your concerns are, but the zoning commission cannot make a decision on a zone change based off of that traffic study that's, as Mr. Ellis said, is under ODOT's authority.
Okay, but, but, but one twenty-five is also a state route as well as thirty-two is. So how's that difference?
ODOT is, is the authority that will make the determination what's, will be included.
Brian said that thirty-two is a state highway, but so is one twenty-five as well.
Correct. Yes, ODOT will determine for both of them. Yes, uh huh.
Okay, so how is one more important than the other when they're literally a couple hundred yards away from each other?
I don't know that we said one was more important than the other. It's just that ODOT is recommending the study for this.
Okay. I, I just, I, okay. I just don't, I, I feel like there are, you're, you're neglecting a tax base that is, um, getting neglected. That's all. That has been neglected for a while, but, but solely because of, uh, road conditions and because of ingress and egress.
And, you know, the only thing we can do is defer to ODOT and ODOT's requirements and where they see the scope of the study when they're looking at their, their roadways.
But they don't, they don't look at it unless they're asked.
We are, we are pretty limited as far as what we can mandate to ODOT.
But, but someone has to ask for it.
And, you know, I believe in the last meeting, we even said that the residents of Signal Hill could reach out to ODOT.
I did, I did. And it got me nowhere. It's got to come from a government agency. It's, which is, or township, it's, which is you guys. And I don't think you did.
So I, I, I don't think there's anything else that we're going to be able to say that will satisfy your concerns. Um, of the ODOT study that, again, we do not define because of ODOT.
Okay, well, agree to disagree. That's fine.
I'm sure that's probably not the answer you would prefer. Uh.
It's not, but if you live up here, you'd feel differently.
You know, I think everyone has their own concerns of their own neighborhoods. So with that, I think we'll go ahead.
You're right.
Okay, so anyone else from the audience would like to speak? Hearing no one, um.
Yes.
This is Leanne Bark at fifty sixty-nine Signal Hill Lane. My husband and I are both on the call. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, it seems like any comment that I would have is really just feeding a dead horse because it's obvious that everyone's in support of this project. Um, and not really supportive of the neighborhood concerns about this, but I have to speak to go on the record just to say that I have no doubt that this is going to wear its head. After this whole development is approved in the traffic, it's going to be a problem. And we'll be sitting up here saying, we told you so, we told you so. Because even right now, if any of y'all would, would bother in, in your position to have driven down here and taken a look at what happens exiting Beachmont to thirty-two during peak time, you would know that it's going to be a huge problem. So huge, in fact, that I believe that when I've looked at it most recently, I believe cars will be backed up to that second entrance into that shopping center. And I just want to go on the record saying that. I don't think that anyone disagrees with the fact that development needs to be approved down there. But a five-story apartment building is not the best choice. And I think that's going to be revealed at some point in the future when it's too late after you have already approved and made consideration for this development. So nothing I'd say I know matters, but I would have to be on the record with that.
Thank you. We do take all comments into consideration. So is there anyone else in attendance tonight that would like to speak?
Yes, my name is Tom Carlton. I'm with five zero seven seven Signal Hill Lane. Um, my only question was, was there a sound study done as far as the noise levels from the roof outside of Google researching?
You know, there was, uh, part of this submission package was a study performed by a engineering firm that estimated the sound level at the nearest residence to be twenty-six decibels in a worst-case scenario. And that was performed by a company called McVee and Magnum Engineering, Inc. On January seventh of twenty twenty. And there's other supporting information in that, um, letter that was part of the submission package.
Wait, so you said it was in twenty twenty?
Uh, twenty twenty-one. Sorry if I misspoke.
Okay.
January seventh of twenty twenty-one. Any other questions or did you find that on the website as the applicant submission? I don't know if you, we lost you or not, but, um, hearing nothing. If anyone else would like to speak, please state your name and address. And gentlemen, if you do find the document I was referring to, we can come back to you in a minute or two. Anyone else like to speak?
Caroline, I live at five zero seven five Signal Hill Lane. I had a, a question for the applicant. The signage that's going to be on the building, is that going to have fluorescence at the fifty feet?
Mr. Wampner, if you could respond to that?
Um, yes, we do, do plan to have an illuminated sign. That sign does face, uh, south away from Signal Hill. Um, and, and we don't anticipate it being an extremely bright sign that's throwing out tons of light.
All right.
Oh. Mr. Chairman, I'll also add that, um, you, you didn't mention the, the, the sound analysis as part of our application. The, uh, full traffic scope with ODOT was also part of our application to help answer, um, Dan S.'s, um, comments. I didn't get his last name. I apologize.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the two areas of study that I referenced, correct?
Uh, yes, the two areas along, along Beachmont are all that ODOT required us to include in the study.
All right. Thank you. So anyone else in the audience like to?
Can I follow up on Andrew's comment there?
Uh, you have to address it to the commission, please?
I'm sorry, to the, I'm sorry. This is Dan Scullen from fifty eighty-two Signal Hill Lane, following up on that comment from, from, from the developer. Um, is, uh, just because ODOT, or just because, uh, ODOT didn't require it, doesn't mean you shouldn't, you, you should look at the entire neighborhood. And, and my question is to the township and to the developer that if some, at, at some point down the road, if there's a major, major traffic impact problem, you guys are going to be step up and willing to address it. Um, this is a direct question.
Uh, sir, I, I don't, I don't know how to respond. I mean, address it.
Well, well, I mean.
By state requirements, that is with, you know, beyond, I think anyone on this call sort of control of, address something. Uh, it's related with ODOT.
No, 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 no. That, that, like, as a, I, I want this development to happen. I think it's good, good for the township. It's good for our neighborhood. But I don't think there, there are certain things that are not being looked at. And, and as being a good neighbor, um, from someone that's from Columbus, um, if you want to be a good neighbor, you want to commit to making things better if things are wrong, that, 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 that don't go right as you anticipated. That's all. And, and the township has a part on that as well. So I'm asking a direct, I'm asking a direct question. If there's, if, just because ODOT doesn't require it, um, doesn't mean that it should be looked at. And, and if it's a problem, then is, is anyone willing to step up and fix it?
Mr. Wampner, a question for you. Will you extend the traffic inspect study to include the Signal Hill intersection? And I guess my thought is the number of trips that exist today at that intersection compared to what would be generated by your development. And I guess my thought is the number of trips that exist today at that intersection compared to what would be generated by your development?
And Andrew, Andrew, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not asking you to respond. I, I just want a commitment that says at some point if this is, um, if this is a problem, that the township and the developer, everyone's willing to relook at this and, and address it. That's all, that's all, I'm looking for that. That's all I'm asking for.
So.
Mr. Drury, I would, I mean, Mr. Wapner, could you respond to my question here?
Can you restate your question?
I guess, could you extend the traffic study to look at the intersection of Signal Hill and Route, State Route 32? The number of trips generated at today's volume? The same thresholds of number of trips at that intersection for the defined analysis years of 2020 existing year, 2021 opening year, 2025 and 2031?
Andrew, before you answer, Andrew, before you answer, I'm not asking to, to commit to anything. I'm just saying that if, um, you, you, you cannot commit to something to a study now that is, you don't know the results. I, I want this development to happen. And when, when it does happen, I hope it does, that, but the impact of that is going to be realized a year or two down the road. And when that happens, the township and the developer should have some, uh, some, 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 some play in that and that.
Mr. Scullin, um, I mean, it sounds to me like you have existing problems that, that may need to be addressed.
I'm sorry?
It, not you. It sounds like Signal Hill may have existing.
John, uh, if you could still keep everything addressed, mission complete?
No, I'm sorry, who, 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 who was talking?
Sir, this is, uh, Mr. Wapner.
Please address it to the commission.
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, it, it sounds as though Signal Hill may have some existing traffic issues that I don't believe our site alone is necessarily, uh, responsible for. Um, our civil engineer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe as part of our study, when we're studying the, the intersections leaving our site, um, we'll have estimates on whi- which directions people travel. So, so many people will, will go west on Beachmont and so many people will go east. Um, now, a, a good portion of those people are going to continue on 125 towards Cincinnati and certainly some will take 32. Uh, I don't know that our study will necessarily differentiate between those. Um, our civil engineer can step in.
And I agree with you, Andrew, you're correct.
If, if, what I guess I'm, I'm requesting is could you have your engineer look and say how many will continue on 125 westward? And how many would go on 32?
Um, Mark, if you're on, um, is that part of the current study?
This study is not looking into 32 Signal Hill, no.
Well, is it, do we make a differentiation on, uh, trips that continue on 125 or those that turn north onto 32?
It will be specifically running this property, uh, specific for this property. Now, Jenny, if you come wrong, then let me know, but that's, that's the way it's understood.
That is correct, Mark. We would have to add that as a intersection to count, to differentiate, differentiate the two.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not asking, what I'm asking for, what I'm asking for is a commitment in the future because this is going to be a major impact that's not going to be realized um, until it's almost done and there's 500 people living in this complex, which is fine. I'm all for that. Look, I'm, I get it. I, I want this to happen. And, and, but the impact is not going to be realized for, for a couple of years after, after it's done. So, so my, 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 my question is, are we, is, is, is the township and developer willing to at least commit to, let's revisit this and and try and make it better because it's already an issue?
Mr. Drury. Thank you all. Mr. Drury, please.
Thank you. Sorry, this is Paul Giraffe, planning and zoning director. Um, a couple of things, I'd like to interject. Um, because we are virtual, we seem to have gotten a little off of our normal protocol for our zoning commission meetings. The protocol is we hear from the applicant, we hear from the audience, then we have rebuttal from the applicant. Um, ultimately, this is a zoning commission decision and a recommendation to the board of township trustees who will make the final decision on the zone change. As far as the traffic impact study, if the zoning commission chooses during their discussion amongst themselves, they can make certain conditions on their recommendation to the trustees. Regardless, ODI will require what they determine is necessary for this development to go in if the zone change is approved. So that's not something that the zoning commission or the applicant can make a commitment to at the meeting at this point. So I think, you know, we've heard the testimony, we should see if there's any other testimony that is, uh, that someone wants to give and then the zoning commission can open their discussion from there.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. I agree, making open commitments for something that's unknown is beyond what we can do at this point in time. So with that, if there's anyone that has not spoken yet that would like to speak, please state your name and address and affiliation to the case. Hearing no one, uh, we will go ahead and close the public comment section and open amongst the commission members to discuss further. So, Mr. Anderson, we'll start with you.
Always seem to lose the mute button right before it's my turn to speak. Apologies.
Of course.
Um, yeah, I think my general observations, you know, this is an exciting development. Um, I think it'll add quite a bit to Anderson's mix of residential and, and hopefully retail options as well. Sorry about my three-year-old there. Um, there will be impact, um, especially AM and peak traffic, uh, impact, which will bear itself out in the ODAC tra- um, traffic impact study. Um, we've talked about that quite a bit. I also, I'm kind of, you know, personally excited, you know, there are quite a few other apartment complexes in the vicinity, um, and two towers right next to this actually. But the stock hasn't really been updated lately, so I'm excited to see something new, um, come in and add to the mix. With regard to this sign, also, we drive, you know, everybody drives by, uh, this location quite often, I think. I'm speaking kind of out of turn for everybody else, but um, you know, typically, or normally I'd be against such a large sign, but this sign, I think it's a, it's, um, ugliness is more cosmetic than it is its bulk, which is offset by the distance it's set back from Beachmont. Um, so I think, you know, refurbishing the sign and, and hopefully styling it to match the styling of the building itself will go a long way to remediating quote unquote the eyesore that that sign is. Um, and any reduction in its bulk will be welcome, but I don't really see that as any kind of, um, thing that's going to, you know, straw that's going to break this camel's back. Um, and I do think the applicants reasonably addressed the concerns that were brought up last week. I think that the concerns about the scope of the traffic study are warranted and need to be considered and hopefully, um, I apologize, my three-year-old is very interested in this meeting. Um, hopefully, you know, there is a resolution that, that can come out of that and, and be addressed at some point down the road, but, um, in general, those are kind of my observations during this second round of, um, observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Eliff?
I really liked Mr. Anderson's comments. Um, I agree with him, uh, on this for the most part. They did answer my questions from last time, which was on screening of the units. Uh, I was guessing that it would be tremendously bulky and not practical to screen them based on the elevation change. And that was demonstrated. With that being said, I do have, uh, I, I hear what the, the neighbors on Signal Hill are worried about. I think if you put those massive screening structures up there, it's going to be more obtrusive than, uh, the smaller units. Um, they did also answer my question on the, the parking. I'm not a big fan of the reduced parking aisles, but I was okay with that circulation they planned. I, I do agree with Mr. Wapner that if you keep the main aisles at the 24, I think it will work. And in particular, because they are offering a number of spaces quite generously for public use, which puts, uh, a demand on their property that they really, uh, don't have to undertake. I also wanted to remind everybody, and you know it already, but what's on the books now for this property is, um, terrible is too strong a word, but it's really would be a huge detractor in this area as opposed to this tremendous building that we see the graphic of, which I think will be an asset for the area. I think it's, it's really nice looking and, you know, um, prior comment was about, you know, apartments. You know, nobody's really thrilled with apartments, but the reality of it is, is that shopping center is a failure. It's obvious. We all know why. And there needs to be a practical use of this property and this meets that use and there's tremendous demand everywhere for apartments. And so if the township could land a really quality structure like this, I think it actually will uh, enhance the neighborhood and not be a detractor. Um, I, I did not, that was explained to me. I like the conforming sign better, but I could, I could live with the old sign if it were, were fixed up, I think. And lastly, on the traffic impact study, I don't think it would hurt anything if Ms. Ingalls at Bear Becker would at least broach the subject with ODOT on studying that intersection that all the Signal Hill people are using to get onto 32. It's got to be frustrating. My guess is that there will be a little traffic generation from this site that will impact that. But appropriately to answer the neighbors' questions, they obviously feel strongly about it. Uh, why not ask ODOT that question of, should this scope of this, uh, traffic study be increased to that? And if not, why not? In that way, there will be an answer with, uh, for Mr. Scullin. And, um, you know, there may be very legitimate answers that the traffic experts will tell us it does, or maybe, you know, we should think about it, but it doesn't hurt to ask the question and perhaps, uh, they could be prepared for that when it lands on the trustee's desk. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Eliff. Ms. McBride?
Thank you. Um, I agree with, uh, the comments, the majority of the comments of my fellow commissioners. Um, I think that, that this is going to be a good project. I think it's going to be a great entryway to Anderson Township. Um, need to put a big sign up that says Anderson Township and not Mount Washington, but we'll, we'll come back to that. Um, so, uh, at any rate, um, no, I, I think it's going to be a really good, um, good project for the township. I'm in, uh, support of, um, many of the variances, uh, modifications that the applicant has asked for. Um, I was the one that was asking a lot of questions about the AC units and what they were going to look like, and I appreciate your, you're doing that analysis of the screening. I agree with Mr. Eliff. I think that the screening, in some cases, it, it turns out that that's, that's going to be worse than what, what you have. And, and I think that's going to be the case in this situation. So I think, um, not doing the, the screening, um, is the appropriate thing to do. But I do appreciate you're doing the, um, the noise review, um, providing us with the decibel levels and so forth, so that we can make an informed decision this evening. Um, I was not a fan and still not really a great fan of reducing the drive aisles to, um, from the 24 feet that's required. Uh, but I do appreciate the fact that you have increased them to 22 feet. Um, and whereas I might not be driving my Nissan Armada down them, um, they're limited in their locations. And, um, I do agree with the comments that, um, these are not going to be high turnover spaces, um, in most instances. Um, so I, I think that that's appropriate as well. Um, the one instance, though, that I do feel pretty strongly about has to do with that sign. We've been asking, uh, businesses and developments up and down 125 Beachmont Avenue to come into compliance, um, with our sign code. Most recently Salon Concepts, um, we had Krispy Kreme, I, you know, going back all the way to Rogers Dennis and so forth. We've been asking folks to come into compliance. Um, the fact that the prior applicant, um, for the approved plan could come into compliance with our sign code, um, with a sign that was going to be 15 feet and 100 square feet, um, and the exact same number of uses. We're going to have, you know, the, uh, certainly, uh, uh, development sign on that, um, sign and then panels for the tenants. And if they could make that work, I don't understand why it wouldn't work now. Um, in addition to that, we're also going to have a building sign on this building that's going to be 40 to 50 feet in the air. So I, I don't think, and the height of the buildings, I don't think there's going to be any question where, where the skytop development is. So, um, I am very much supportive of the project and I'm very much supportive of, um, the, uh, variances slash modifications that the applicant has requested, with the exception of the, of the sign. And I want to see the sign, um, stay as currently approved for the site. Those are all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, thank you. Um, going fourth of five, I agree with just about everything that has been said. Uh, the two issues that, uh, you know, come out to me are the, the parking aisles. We asked for 24 feet. Not because we just throw a number out there. It's based on, uh, what we've done in the past, what our, our zoning codes say. Uh, we know what works. Going from 20 to 22 is a positive direction. 24 is what the, uh, the zoning code says. And as far as the sign, I agree, uh, with previous commissioner that, uh, look, we've, uh, we've approved things in the past. When we come to rezoning, we try and get people into compliance and, uh, it's the best tool we have. Uh, there is no such thing as grandfathering on the signs as far as I know, so I'd like to use this time or this effort to, uh, get them into compliance. But other than that, I think this is, uh, this is a gateway to Anderson Township. It's very important, uh, we get this right. So.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. And my comments to the commission are very similar to all the others. Um, as far as the positivity of the overall development, the areas where the applicant has increased the drive aisles to alleviate some of the concerns of ingress and egress in parking. Uh, somewhere in Ms. McBride, I'm not going to pull my Toyota Tundra into those parking spots very often. Um, because I probably wouldn't be able to get out, but I am one of the few that drive a vehicle that large. Uh, I am also in agreement with Ms. McBride and Mr. Lewis that the request for the modifications to the sign to bring it back to what was previously approved doesn't seem like an overall hardship for the overall development. It still has the same number of tenant opportunities for signage as the existing sign and brings it back into compliance to the zoning code. So I do believe that modification to the sign is something that, you know, I would be in favor of for any sort of motion. So that concludes my comments. If anyone on the commission would like to make a motion, it'd greatly appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would put forth a motion then to approve a major modification, case two dash 2018 Skytop for 5218 Beachmont. I don't know if that's me echoing or something else. At any rate, um, and that would include, uh, the approval of the major modification with the variances to sections 3.15D1, 3.15F5, F5, um, section, uh, 5.2.7, um, section 5.3D3, 5.3D3 in two separate instances, one to, um, decrease the, uh, length of the required stalls from 19 feet to 18 feet. And one to decrease the drive aisle widths from 24 feet to 22 feet for those aisles as specified on the development plan. And then, um, to make the approved modification to section 5.3L5B, um, so that the only, um, variance or modification that is being requested uh, is to, uh, exceed the existing sign requirement. And I would, um, stipulate that the
And I would stipulate that the signage that's permitted be in compliance with the zoning code with 100 square feet and 15 feet in height.
I can't hear Jonathan, are you speaking, Jonathan?
Hey, Andrew, can you do me a favor and take off your screen? I can't control anything. Thank you.
I was on that mute button also, couldn't find it. If anyone would like to second Ms. McBride's motion?
I'll second it since I'm talking, I guess.
Thank you.
I thought the motion was very excellent, by the way.
Ms. Donovan, if you could please call a rule.
Ms. McBride, can I ask for clarification that the only variance that you are denying in this motion is that the request for signage?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, now I can't. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Elliff?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. Thank you all for your patience. Mr. Drury, Ms. Donovan, any suggestions on what may happen next month?
We, we are expecting at least one new case. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Will next month also include officers' election?
We should, yes.
That would be good.
I just didn't want to do it during my continuation.
I'm sorry you're breaking up.
So with that, a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you all in favor. All opposed. Well, thank you all very much for your time tonight, I appreciate it.